Scott Pet Products is your local expert on developing, producing, and distributing top-quality pet products. We are currently seeking motivated individuals to join our team. Benefits include insurance after 90 days, PTO, 401K, four-day work week, discounts on products, opportunities for advancement, and so much more. Interested applicants may apply online at scottpet.com or by visiting our Rockville location to fill out a paper application. We look forward to hearing from you.
Welcome everybody to our monthly town board meeting for the town of Rosedale. Before we start, please join me in reciting "Pledge Allegiance to the Flag of Our Country."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, ladies, you have your minutes to review. I feel outnumbered up here. It's been moved and seconded approved of minutes from the last meeting. Is there anything under question? One in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Go around the crowd now for public comments. Start over here.
This is our newspaper reporter.
Yes. Nikki.
Yeah.
Chad. Down on my birch.
I'm alright.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Kevin. Alright. We'll move right into old business. Update on the pantry drive.
Oh, yeah, we have rock now and Cliff's been practicing with the excavator. And just need to spray the weeds again and then we'll try to put some out there.
He's been spreading rock all over town, hasn't he?
Yeah, he has. Any holy seeds.
Yeah, I have a joint update.
Oh, but down there too. We'll do that in our new business. You haven't heard about it forever.
Right.
Uh, thank you. Any interest in the council seat yet?
No. I mean, I'm gonna resort to going door to door, I guess. I asked a younger fellow the other day that mentioned it to me before if he was still interested and so he could get back to me, so.
Surely in the town of, what is it, 750 people, somebody would have an interest in it.
I know, we need someone.
Yeah, we do. Okay.
I have something to say about the lighting issue as well.
I'm getting ready to do that now. Uh, update on the Dollar General lighting problem.
I was in here thinking about that and I called a different location and where I kind of know the manager and I asked her what the policy was at that store. I mean, not that, I don't think that our Dollar General, I think she's being honest, that's not it. I just wondered if they had similar issues or if they'd encountered anything. And she said that, it's funny that we have too many lights because she has no lights. And she said that she would contact the district manager for me because she wasn't allowed to give their number out. So she did and she promptly called me back, it was probably 10 minutes later. And she said, I wanted to let you know that he says that all of those lights are like motion-activated.
Oh, that's questionable.
And I said, I don't really think they are. I don't think that where they're located, they are. And she said, that's what he said, they're all motion-activated and there's nothing he can do about it. So I, I said, no, I really think that, but, I mean, I think she was like doing me a favor in asking. And she's like, so that's, that's all I can tell you. And I was like, she's like, I'm sorry, that's not more of an answer. But I just thought if I talked to another like manager, she would have some insight on how that worked and who I could go to, you know? And I didn't get anywhere, but I did try.
Well, I've looked on some of the other Dollar General stores around. None of them have those great big lights on top.
No.
None of them do.
No, and this lady.
They have little small LED wall packs, what they got.
And this lady said that she has like her, she said at night, her store is pitch black, she has no lights.
Maybe it varies by district.
Perhaps, I would think that.
It must vary by town.
Yeah. Well, I was, where this one was located, they're more in-town. And I was thinking that maybe they would have more in that, because they're more of a business district and less of a residential district like we are, but I don't know. I did, so I did do some digging. We could go back and.
Most of the time, they just have like an inside light on and nothing outside.
Right. So I don't know, I tried, I guess, but we can go, I can try the corporate route next, so.
I think that's, that answer is not suitable.
Right, I, I, I just wanted to know.
Kind of like a noise ordinance, only the light pollution, excessive light ordinance.
It would be light pollution.
That would be a possibility.
Especially when you got people who live right across the street that's shining in their houses or whatever.
Right, and it is bright, I mean, they are really bright. So, so anyway.
I would think that the ones that's along the side of the building would be sufficient for what she told me about they need security for whenever they leave the building.
Well, and they, they could time out shortly after they leave the building, you know what I mean? If they're not there, what, what time do we close? Do we close at 10:00 PM? So they could time out at 10:30, you know?
Yeah, I would think so.
And that would probably be plenty of time, I would think, so.
Yeah, there is street light right there too. Whatever, it's uh.
I know, I just, I just wanted to let you know I did some legwork.
I think they're giving us the runaround myself.
And I don't think that the manager that I talked to was giving us the runaround, I think she was just relaying the information that she got.
Well, what she should have done is had the district manager call you.
Call me, I wondered that too, so.
Well, maybe I'll talk to Jessica again and tell her that I want the district manager to contact the town.
Yeah, that's fine.
And within a week, so we'll know something. Uh, I assume everybody's noticed that the concrete over there in front of the building next door is in and looks really nice. We got a new entrance to the police station. And hopefully the new restaurant that this is designed to help for will be open soon.
I do believe it is her plan to open soon. I did talk to Scott, a couple people expressed concerns about maybe the curb needing painted.
Well, I was wondering about that too, because you're not gonna be able to park there.
Right, and then somebody said, well, do we need no parking signs? And, you know, while it seems like a no-brainer that you wouldn't try to park there, I guess we can't. We don't really know for sure that someone wouldn't try to park there. So Scott and I discussed that and he said, he said he would kind of feel out what he thought was better if we just painted it all. And he would paint it, that they, you know, would paint it themselves.
The business that they're in is.
Correct, he would be happy to do that. He would appreciate if there would be no strawberries painted on the new sidewalk. So, um, you know, because it is, it does look really nice and everything, so. Um, but he did say he would handle painting the curb and taking care of that.
Well, I think that.
They talked about a fence.
Yeah, they, they've discussed like a, like a wrought iron fence, a railing around that area. Right now, that building's separated into three spots. So the offices are in this end, the restaurant's going in the middle, but the offices are moving to this end. And the, I think the long-term plan is for the restaurant to be able to take over the end spot as well. Because that's how most of the other restaurants were. And then, so she would have all of that front space to do outdoor dining out there. So there is a nice ramp on this side, I'm sure everybody's noticed that goes up and around, so.
Yeah. Very nice, nice job they did.
It looks really nice. And then when he puts awnings on the building, I think it's gonna look really, really nice.
It'll look even more, more better.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. What'd you find out about the Rockville banners?
Um, well, Carol and I found out that our banners are the same size.
Well, they are?
Yes. So I contacted Mandy shortly after that meeting and she messaged me back and she said that Marshall had expressed an interest as well. They didn't really have any, they were kind of just gauging interest at that point. She said, so they gave me, she gave me a measurement so I could see if ours were the same size. We have, we used to do, we used to hang tin, then we lost one of our brackets, so we actually have banners up, we have extra. So we could probably just give them one that we already have, I think they'd probably be willing to take that. Or we could have a design that we have made, or I could send them the art for that, I guess, so it'd be cohesive. So there's a couple options. I was, I talked to her, then I was gone for a couple days, then I was back and gone again, so I'll get back with Mandy on that. But she said it was just preliminary gauging interest and whatnot, so.
But there was a deadline on it.
There was a soft deadline.
Oh, a soft deadline.
It was a soft deadline, so.
Alright. Have anything else under old business?
Joint guys.
You were right about the snowflakes.
Yes, there are five snowflake banners hanging on the way out of town.
Yeah.
I was gonna do that under new, but we can do it now.
Oh, okay, whenever you want.
I'll do it now, that's fine. Update on the joint picture.
Okay, so a joint called last week and wanted to climb the tower. They're, he said they'd had just COVID and all kinds of things and then they'd had climbers down that were sick. And he had climber available, could they come and climb the tower? So they came and they climbed the tower. It was either, I think it was the week before last, uh, might have been last week, I can't remember. They climbed the tower, they shot some pictures and some sightlines and things like that. And then they did a bunch of driving to see what was offered in the area, like based upon the cable boxes and the AT&amp;T boxes and stuff. And at this time, they do not feel as though they can be competitive with a tower, with putting something on the tower, because they don't feel like they can hit enough homes. And he said he feels like they're a little late to the punch on that because AT&amp;T's offering a fixed wireless service that's similar right now. It's pretty competitively priced. Now, he did say, should we, actually it was a lady, Carla Norlicks, who kind of finished it up. She called me and talked to me today and she said if we do want to consider like broadband or anything like that, they might be able to work with us in some grant money and, you know, because there have been a lot of broadband grants come on down, if that's something we think we want to try and lay fiber optics or whatnot. So that, that discussion could be held in the future, she said. But as of now, nothing on the tower will be proposed.
Okay.
They might want to take a, a survey if you read the comments on Facebook about.
Sparklight, yeah, I know, we talked about that too, and, because she's a Sparklight customer. Um, and, but she said that, you know, they just didn't see the numbers after they drove, so.
I haven't been real happy with AT&amp;T lately anymore.
I think AT&amp;T's been a little, it's been weird lately, usually it's really good and it's not been that, yeah, so I don't know. It has been slow, mhm.
Well, I thought it was just my computer.
No.
But when I stream stuff on the TV, it don't seem to be that way.
My phone buffering, it seems like a lot.
Maybe it's just certain parts of town.
I don't know.
Any other old business?
Is there any movement on that house on Depot?
House on Depot, the one we sold to Kevin.
I didn't write that down, yes.
Um, so we made a mistake on the Depot Street House. And we originally offered it and he was supposed to tear it down within 90 days. And then when he actually signed the contract, it gave him a year. That was a miscommunication between the lawyers and I didn't read it and that's why I'll take responsibility too. But when Scott sent it over, Jordan had done it in his office, someone else, and so it gave Kevin a year. Kevin was actually in here the other day and I said, I would really be grateful if you would get that house down. And he's like, I'll have it down by the deadline. Super-duper.
Good answer.
So, um, but I do think that, uh, the weeds have gotten out of control behind it and I was gonna see if Mr. Bratcher would run over there and remind him that you need to cut the vegetation down and whatnot, so. Yeah. So that's where we're at on the Depot Street House.
The Baldry Street House, okay?
You have that update.
I do have that update. The day after our meeting, I contacted my son's father-in-law. And he says, oh yeah, I know him, we've been friends for years. I said, well, that's nice. Here's my problem with him. So about four days after that, three or four, the guy called me. And he says, I understand you've got a problem with the house by Ms. Browns. Because he knew who she was, because she'd been badgering him for.
Yeah. Years.
Three or four years at least. He said, here's the deal. We sell, buy and sell houses in big lots. Not big lots at the store, but in numbers of houses. He said, that's one of them we sold to whoever it was. And I said, well, it's funny, because it's all still listed in your company's name. Well, I'll have to check into that and get back with it. He talked to me for a lot longer than I wanted to talk to him, but since then, I haven't heard anything. So I guess I'm gonna have to call Charles' father-in-law again and say, hey, what's the deal on this guy? He hasn't re, he returned my call, but there's been no action since, so.
Well, didn't they think at one point they had bought the house across the street?
That was the speculation.
One of the stories.
Yeah, that was one of the stories. There was a pretty good limb that fell in that last storm over there. And it was blocking Baldry Street, but it was from that lot. And I don't know who pushed it out of the way, but somebody, but then Ken Kurtoff cleaned it up, so, yeah. Because there was, I don't know if Clyde called me about that one or not, I think he might have, so. We've mowed it, I think Cliff's mowed it two or three times, I know he's mowed it at least twice.
And this guy's company had paid the taxes for the year, right?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that they paid the taxes for the year on that.
So there's been no transfer of property.
There was no transfer last time I was.
And they've paid the taxes, so what he told me wasn't probably totally accurate.
The taxes are paid up now?
I believe so, I'm gonna look right now.
But anyhow, that's how far I got, which wasn't very far.
Wow. Sounds like he has a lot of properties and really.
They do, and actually, he's, he's a, in an attorney group, but they have this Westgate Properties as one of their.
Wingate.
Okay, Wingate, whatever. As one of their side businesses. You know, I was in Connersville, we came before last on a Friday, I should have went over earlier and went by his office, but we didn't go early enough to do that.
Wingate Properties paid the taxes on May the 10th, that's what it says online, so.
Alright. Well, I'll pursue that some more. Yeah, he went into quite a lengthy story about cutting the grass and who was doing it. Yeah, there's a lot more information than I wanted. It was TMI. Okay, that's my update on that. Any other old business? Hearing that? Move to new business. Under new business, you see in your packet there, a job description for street superintendent.
If you would like for me to change it, reorder it in any way, please let me know. I used some templates from some other towns and took the notes that I had from Becky and Carol and you and kind of looked at it too, John, and everybody was kind of on the same page and just kind of put it together. And I took some of their safety language and stuff like that about kind of the physical expectations and everything, so. Because I kind of liked that, I think it sounded professional. I did give out an application again today, I've given out a few applications, yes.
All we have to do is to agree with, if this is sufficient, then we can advertise more.
Mm-hmm, we can, yeah.
I looked it over, my fault. Are we gonna do a drug test or a background test?
Yeah, I didn't know about that, so, I mean, I know we need a valid driver's license and whatnot, so.
We can do a background check, can't we?
I think we can do a background check, can't we, Kevin?
What we do with the fire department is for like your back, for that, is we make them provide their own copy of their BMV record. It's like five dollars and they get it themselves. For a true background check, we have to, we have to have an account.
They can do it themselves, they can get all the.
Yeah, I think I could probably do it myself, yeah.
And do a limited criminal background check for employment for like 15 bucks.
Yeah, I can do that then.
And that goes back, I think one of them goes back five years and the other one goes back like 15 years.
I think what we, rather than having a drug test, I think we could get them to sign a paper saying they certify that they're drug-free. That way, if they violated it, it could be termination, grounds for termination. I really think that'd be better than drug tests. Anyone want to make a motion to accept this as the job description for, uh, street superintendent?
I'll make the motion and I'll second it.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to accept job description for the street superintendent's position. Question? One in favor say aye.
Do we need to add the background?
Well.
I'd say we don't really have to direct to tell them we're doing a background check.
If you have to provide their copy of their BMV record, there's some free state websites that we can access without costing us anything or them to look at criminal cases and stuff like that. All those we need is a name and date of birth.
Oh, okay. Okay. I mean, I can add something in there about that. So, um, I'll let you guys vote on your motion then.
Yeah, speaking of that, now.
I can add that in, Becky.
One in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
Okay, so do you, I will, can advertise this in the Sentinel next Wednesday? And then what do you want me to say the application deadline is?
We could go till the end of the month, I think.
Okay, till August 31st? And then, you know, okay.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Okay.
You, uh, had a thing in your, the last minutes about talking to the attorney about stormwater?
I did, I did talk to Scott, he actually called me yesterday and said, Natalie, is there something I can be doing for you? I haven't talked to you for a while. And I said, as a matter of fact, we've been discussing possible, um, stormwater grants and things like that. I said, we weren't sure about setting up a stormwater utility. He said that he believes that Clinton had done that not too long ago, he's been involved somewhat. Um, he said that you... He didn't really give me the specifics on how to do it, he kind of talked more about the costs of it, that some people were really complicated on their calculations. He said some people, some communities, which he, I think he said the city of Brazil, who he does some work with, they charge stormwater based upon the size of your lot. In like this really sophisticated calculation. He said, some places have a flat rate for residences and a flat rate for commercial spaces. And, um, I, I think that's what Rockville does. The building that I rent in Rockville, it's seven dollars and 23 cents a month. I don't know what the in-town rate is, like for people that live there. And that's kind of, I think that's a lot. But I think most towns, he said, it's like two or three dollars. Mecca actually has a stormwater utility and they put it on the property taxes.
That'd be one way to be sure and get it.
Yeah, um, but since we have other utilities in town, it's just a line item on Keystone, you can add it on there.
Yeah, they don't have any, they don't have any utilities in Mecca, do they?
No.
They sold their water.
They sold their water to Indian-American. So they can just add it on to our bill for Keystone, so it's, you know. But he said that it is true, you do, you do have to establish a utility in order to seek grant funding, they want you to, because they want you to be able in the long term to fund repairs and things like that. So they want you to be putting money aside for that. So yes, that's the starting point. So we, and we could do a little more digging and see. He said it might be advantageous for us to go back to some of those numbers that were provided to us when we did the wastewater treatment plant. It's my understanding that income survey is good for five years, does that sound right?
It was good for a while, I don't know.
Yeah.
How long?
Well, we did that project in 1617. And so we're probably kept them close to that, but I can, you know, um, probably Eric Smith would have some information on that.
Yeah, Eric or.
Or Terry.
Terry Jones would probably have it, yeah.
Yep, so.
He don't work for them anymore though, does he?
Well, West Central, whatever they were called before, it's now Thrive.
Yeah.
So they've kind of morphed into something else.
But I thought he went somewhere else.
I don't know if he went somewhere else or not. But I think Eric would probably have some record of that. And we might have some inform, I'm sure we have some information in that wastewater stuff, so.
Yeah.
Can we handle more taxes?
Well, it's not really a tax. Um, I think it's actually pretty minimal, you know what I mean, I don't think it's a lot, but.
There's a lot of people in this town that are stretched out pretty much now.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, so, but that is, that is what has to be done to secure grant funding for it, so. If I remember right.
We can't just dig a ditch.
I don't think so.
It, it's not working right now.
Right.
Well, it needs dug out.
And, um, I remember right.
Show me a ditch that's dug out and working proper.
Um. I feel like the whole town.
It'd be, it'd be nice if. It was all. Surveyed and. You know, get the right pitch and everything. Goes down there on the south end of town. The color going across the road is higher than the ditch. And if you raise the ditch, the other ditch feeding it is too low. So there's some engineering that's gonna have to be done in some spots, similarly in the Sunnyside addition over there. There's gotta be some way of dispersing the water that collects over there.
Cause there's nothing there.
No, there never was any. Planning on that at all, when that area was put in. And there's also some areas otherwise that, yeah, you can dig a ditch, but. Is it gonna be going the right way and so forth, we don't have any. Uh, expertise in that.
Field, that area?
That area, no.
No, I, I feel like, um, when I was on the counseling on the wastewater grant committee, John, you were too. Um, I feel like they kind of preliminary estimated stormwater at about half a million dollars.
Yeah, yeah, they kinda looked at it before.
Yeah, they did, when they did that smoke testing and stuff like that, and they did, kinda made some observations and made some recommendations. But, I mean, it is definitely a, cause stormwater's definitely an issue in town.
Oh, it's, it's a big issue.
Yeah, I mean, it, it genuinely is, yeah, you guys have had issues in the firehouse, yeah.
We've, we've got yet another issue when they raised Middle Street, where they changed the pitch of it. And it all runs down that alley in our back parking lot too. Even since we've had it redone.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we, we do have a stormwater, it is a concern, so.
Well, they need to look into it just a little more.
Yeah, I'll dig out some stuff and shoot Eric Smith some emails and see what he has to say.
Alright, uh, also under. New business. We need to pass a resolution tonight to reduce. The budget?
It's a, it's a budget reduction for twenty twenty-one. Okay, so when I went to do my budget with Heather a couple weeks ago, um, we aren't contributing to our rainy day fund right now. So, if we were to spend the rest of our rainy day fund. We would not be able to fund it next year based upon the cash balance in there, so she recommended if we don't have any plans for that money, that we do a reduction. So, we're just reducing that, and I take it was at like two hundred and thirty-five dollars or something.
Yeah.
Um, and the same with local road and street, we currently have a budget of like twelve thousand dollars, we're not gonna spend twelve thousand dollars from now till the end of the year in there. But if we did.
We need to change them on parks.
Well, we'll talk about that in a minute, but if we did spend all that, we would not be able to fund it next year, so she's just, she made these recommendations so we could keep those numbers next year. So, it's pretty simple, but the rest of the budget went well, I mean. It's about the same as last year, we didn't really go up, most people aren't trending, uh, uh, like asking for more money because our. Um, certified shares and stuff, like that numbers are not always been released from the state yet, we're not a hundred percent sure. They were telling us to budget that at eighty percent, I think most of us are budgeting normally. And we got some extra property tax money, so I wasn't super concerned about cutting our budget in any way. But this budget reduction, this is on our twenty twenty-one budget, next year's budget. This is just saying we, you know. We aren't gonna spend all that money.
Reduction resolution ordinance slash ordinance. If you say ordinance, we gotta.
I, you, you can just call it a resolution, yeah, it's a resolution, this is her template that I used, she sent me this template, so just call it a resolution, yeah, cause she said it's a resolution.
Whereas it's been shown that certain existing appropriations now have unobligated balances. That will not be needed for the purpose for which they were appropriated. It is further ordained, resolved, that the following existing appropriations be reduced in the following amounts. Section one. Be it ordained by the town of Rosedale Park County, that the expenses taxing units, the following additional sums of money. Are hereby appropriated out of the funds named for the purposes specified, subject to laws governing the same. Rainy day fund amount reduction requested two thirty, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Local road and street amount reduction requested five thousand fifty-four, five thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars. And capital, cumulative capital investment fund amount reduction requested twenty-seven sixty-three. That is it.
So when we take that out of the budget, where does that money go?
Well, we're not taking the money anywhere, we're just saying we're not going to spend the money, we're no longer giving ourselves permission to spend the money, it's still there.
But we still have.
We still have it, but.
It's so confusing.
It, you know what it is.
The way their budget, the way the state of Indiana does budget is super crazy.
It's really stressful because you, you know, even this is the, the third year that I've done it, it's still like, okay, I know what you, I know what you're saying to me, but. And it took me a long time to understand that when you prepare your budget, they ask you for your first six months, so where you are at the end of June thirtieth. But they're taking into consideration that, okay, if you. If you had ten thousand dollars budgeted and you've spent seventy percent of that going into June, then they're thinking, okay, are you gonna have to, you're gonna overspend or, you know what I mean? So it, it's, it's really, ah, it is.
In order to get money, you gotta save money.
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't go anywhere, it just, it just lets us fully fund that same amount next year. And you know, next year we would maybe use that money in local road and street, we didn't have anything to match this year, so. We've just been doing some small things around town, and we have money for that, so.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Make a motion to adopt it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Carol Brown?
Yes.
It's been moved to second to pass resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash one. All in favor say aye, aye? Pose, same sign? Motion carried. We will need to sign.
So the budget, um, our budget hearing is slated for next month's meeting. I was smart this year and I made it at seven o'clock instead of six thirty, so it'll just start right before our regular meeting starts. And then the adoption meeting will be October twelfth at our October meeting, and it'll be right before the meeting starts. So. Really, like I said, I didn't make any drastic changes to the budget, I mean, but I can give everybody a copy, I can try to email everybody one.
Look at a warrant, see if you wanna change anything or move any money around.
Any other new business? Anybody have new business down there? Alright, let's go to department reports then. Department reports, water had. Ninety-three penalties generated and two tags on, one was paid in full and one was paid fifty percent.
Gary did have an IDM inspection at the water plant. Did you get the email?
Um, no, I don't know.
I got the report, um, his major violation was that we don't have a cross connection ordinance, but we do have a cross connection ordinance. So I'm gonna send that ordinance in, which Gary said, he came and asked me. And I said, yes, we have one, do you want a copy of it, and he said, no, I don't think I need it, they just asked me if I had, if we had one. And then that was like our major violation. So I don't understand that, but the guy sent it to me too, so I'll send that in and see if we can get that taken off there. Um, the other things were pretty minor. Better in the inspection, but I think it overall went pretty well, so. Gary was having some trouble with the chlorine regulator, he ordered some parts and made some repairs. So if we had any like odd water, he was having some trouble with that. And Rob's been having trouble at the wastewater plant again. I don't know what's going on, Cliff had to go out there yesterday and do some stuff, so I don't know what that is.
Well, I haven't heard anything about that.
Okay, Rob's in Florida right now, so.
I know, that uh. Had some generator issues.
Um, yes, let me say this about the generator issue since you brought that up, so our service contract is with W. Williams on generators. They came at the beginning of June and inspected both of the generators. Um, it was my understanding that the guy was gonna call me about replacing the hoses and stuff like that at the water plant. Thing, and I never received a call, so I didn't, nobody ever, nobody ever contacted me from Williams saying we needed to do anything. This was at the beginning of June, well, then we had that storm, we lost power, the backup generator did not work at the wastewater plant. Because the battery didn't work, and it was almost out of fuel, which we filled it with fuel, that's fine. Um, so Rob had another company out of our service contract come and service it. And that's fine. Their fee was like nine hundred dollars. And he wanted us to go, it was, I thought it was pretty pricey for a battery replacement.
Was that all it did?
Maybe in for the travel, well, they did that and they kinda looked it over and they had travel time. But our service contract is for seven hundred and eighty dollars per, per year on each one, um. So I got the bill from Williams. Last week, after their June visit, and it recommended that the wastewater plant get a new battery. Let me know the fuel was low, and the, and the one at the water plant said we need to replace all these hoses and all these things because they're dry rotting. Well, that's really not that helpful two months later. So, Williams is not all that, and then I don't know about this other company. Williams' contract is up this year, I was thinking we would maybe consider asking Stan Lesniak about that because he does that kinda work a lot, and he's local. I mean, do we wanna get, Rob was having this Evapar, um, that fixed it, he was having them submit a proposal. Um, do we wanna ask Stan for a proposal?
Seventy-five penny.
Yeah, Williams has been a little disappointing, and they should've called and brought those things up and not waited until they sent me a invoice two months later.
Yeah. Disappointing.
Mm-hmm, it really is.
Well, that pretty well covers the water and street, I mean, water and sewer, street department, where's Cliffy, how come he's not here?
I don't know where Cliffy is, hi Cody. Um, Cliff has been. Spreading some rock, filling some holes, he's done a tremendous amount of tree trimming, he's hacking limbs off every time I turn around.
He painted crosswalks.
He did paint some crosswalks at the school.
But you know what, those are wearing off already, do we need a different type of paint?
He said something about.
I didn't think it looked very thick whenever I was out.
Yeah.
Said it's not got that metallic look to it either, that. Might look into it.
Not reflective, yeah. Um.
Mrs. Hayes, when she brought the kids out yesterday, was impressed.
Yeah, um, so he's been doing all of that, we discussed patching and patching holes today. And, um. Cliff likes to stay pretty close to home, so I called Park County Ag and they just mixed. Patch, um, for the county, and he is, he said he wanted to let it sit for a week, so Monday. I've arranged for Cliff to go get some patch out there, and he's gonna start doing some patching. Um, he's got the holes going into, on Maple Street and subdivision on the list. Um, we can mention Park Street to him too, Becky, so he's gonna start with a couple tons, do a little bit, if anybody wants to volunteer and help him with the shovel, he'd probably appreciate it. Um.
I would drive the truck if he could have a shovel.
I was gonna offer to drive the truck.
Yeah, well.
I was gonna say, I could probably drive, but.
Um, well, he's trying to decide if he wants to put it in the back of the dump truck or use the dump trailer, so he's trying to make some decisions.
Do we have any funded community service hours that need to be?
I don't know, um, last community service worker we had just kinda started skirting our calls and not calling us back, so we're kinda done with him. So, I don't know, Newtown Marshall, do you know of any community service needed? No? Okay. Um, so, yeah, I mean, Cliff's, you know.
Not to say that I won't make a call up to Park County probation and see if they've got anybody available in our area.
Yeah. So that's what's been going on in the street part.
Okay, Clark?
We need to look at repainting the Maryville round. It's got some chips, I had the grandkids over there the other day and it was flaking off pretty bad. Starting to show some rough spots on it, so.
Anything else?
No, I don't think I. Has Duke been out there for electric or anything?
I haven't heard anything.
No, alright.
No.
Fire department?
Uh, they had a total of nine runs, seven med, one possible gas leak, and a mutual egg to Bridgeton for a ten fifty PI. And they had a shrimp boil.
Personal injury, PI?
A wreck, motorcycle wreck, yeah.
Ten fifty was an accident, PI was injury.
Well, you know, some of us don't get on that radio.
Haven't, I just.
Do those numbers.
I just.
She's just reading it.
I just read what was written.
I don't know that.
Of course, I knew what it was.
Well, you listen to the scanner though, no, I don't.
Well, that's your fault.
No, I'm not nosy enough to listen to the scanner. I'm not, I don't listen to scanner.
I just called Becky and asked her what it was.
But sometimes this silly thing goes offline though. That's irritating.
You got the gnats in here.
Well, that's, I think, the result of some maybe potatoes next door.
Oh.
The gnats.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, that's. Was your shrimp boil a success?
Very much so. We served two hundred and sixty-four shrimp dinners, probably had another. Thirty to forty people that ate hamburgers and hot dogs. So we probably had three hundred people through the door, close to it.
Yeah, I had to be out of town again, that's second time.
Breakfast in September?
Uh, September.
Eighteenth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth, I think.
Or something, seven oh one.
Uh, yeah, the nineteenth.
Is that dining?
Uh, should be right now.
Unless something changes drastically.
Uh, cemetery report?
Uh, one, one plot sold, two barren hills.
Okay.
And about to do, um, last week, when somebody else. DPO, no, not, what's the house, school house? Denman.
Uh, that's Denman, yeah.
Denman, they had a limb on their service wire coming in, so. I went and looked at it and called it in, um, that alley back there was really bad, they were just laying on the lines, the limbs and stuff back there, so. Cliff's been going around getting some pole numbers and street addresses of some of these, and we're gonna call in. and street addresses of some of these, and we're gonna call in.
Yeah, their, their tree service hasn't been through Rosedale for a long time.
Well, they were here, they've been working down the railroad rail, kinda behind Gilstraps.
Duke has?
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing.
That's weird.
If Cliff was here, he'd probably know more about it.
Yeah, he's got a notepad.
Yeah.
He's been writing down locations of limbs and stuff. He came in and, and he gave Reddit to me yesterday and again today, and then I said, are you gonna bring it tonight? And then he didn't ever say anything, so.
Didn't wanna commit, did he?
I don't think he wanted to commit. He was very hot today. He was very tired. I said it was time for him to go home, yes.
It was very hot today.
Yeah, he's got a doctor's form going around.
I thought we'd try to get that done before...
Yeah.
It'd be a good idea, yeah. I mean, they don't want limbs laying on their lines either.
No, they don't wanna come out here when there's a storm or...
Yeah. All right, police department?
Darla had issues with her cat again, so I didn't have a report.
Two months in a row.
I know it.
Be the one to call next time.
It's not a very good cat.
It must not be.
It's, it's not.
Maybe we need to talk to the commissioner and say, you guys need better reporting system out there at that sheriff's department. That'll make him happy.
Yeah, we've been having radio issues for about the last three days, three or four days. Maybe your portal radio worked, maybe it won't. They weren't working this morning, so.
Sorry, Trunkie?
We're not having sunspots, are we? Cause of that?
No, but the, the state has been having, uh, internet connectivity problems, and that radio system is all interconnected and it, it's, if we key up the radio here, like, if, if Kevin's out on Main Street and I'm up here and I wanna talk to Kevin, when I key up the radio, it goes to Indianapolis before it comes back to Kevin. So all the towers are connected by the internet, and they've been having connectivity issues, so tires have been, site trunking are down and...
Well, that was probably an efficiency move, wasn't it?
Not going there, John.
Well, you oughta know what the job you do.
I've got my own opinions on the statewide radio system, and I'll keep them to myself, cause I need my job.
I did talk to, uh, Sean Stevens one night last week. He was out mowing grass, like, nine o'clock at night down there. Mentioned to him the two vehicles that were parked there in the grass. Him and his wife were there. They are trying to, in between him working, trying to get over there and help get that cleaned up. Um, he then brought up some vehicles down the alley that are parked along the alley and stuff that have very old plates on them. I told him that I would be making my rounds slowly but surely to get around to people about their vehicles.
So if you, we talked about this last week, if you want to pull an excerpt out of the ordinance and we wanna post it...
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do.
I think we should do that, yeah.
Advise people that we do have the right to tow these vehicles.
Right.
Even if they are on your property.
Right, as long as they're, yeah.
As long as they're tagged and photographed. Cause with Stevens and them living out of town, they're hard to get a hold of, and I just happened to see him out there mowing.
Yeah, I do have a number for her in the town phone.
I think I've got one, too.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the most annoying phone ever.
The other thing, we talked about with the new steps and the railing being all taken down. Maybe putting up a new railing on those few steps going in the office, just so no, somebody, I looked at them the other day. They're back behind the rest of the sidewalk. But I wouldn't want somebody to not be paying attention to come along either a kid on a bike or somebody walking and tripping on them steps. Were you able to get a hold of John?
I have not talked to John Bennett about it. I, I can ask Cliff. We can try to call him and see.
Seen some on Menard's website that I think will work. I just need to go double check some measurements, and they were around a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And I could probably get somebody to help me install them.
That's probably a little less expensive than what John McCher does, and he does really, really nice work. Um, and he did an awesome job putting that in with Cliff.
Along the same lines, I'd like to find somebody, if it's a community worker, somebody to help scrape all that paint around the doors.
I've been thinking about doing that, but...
It's gotta be, it's gotta be scraped. It's been way too hot. It's gotta be scraped or pressure washed or something, cause it's so, it's cold.
I've got the scraper and everything in the back of my mule, but the day has not been...
Yeah.
It's just been a hot summer. Are you gonna have some paint?
Huh?
Are you gonna have some paint?
Menard's does.
I, oh, I forgot I have a gallon of paint.
I have no blue or nothing like that. I don't know. I mean, blue or white, it doesn't really matter.
Um, there is a house I would like for you to stop by about the grass. It's not really been cut all year. Uh, what street do Stephen Carlo live on?
Depot?
Depot, okay. Down on Depot, down towards them, the other side of the street. Um, it's, it looks bad, and we need to talk to him about it. So I'll give you that address, just hit me up.
If it's that bad, I should be able to pick, I should be able to pick it out of the crowd.
If you drive by, you'll be able to see it, yeah.
You will see it. Um, I also, the bank is super tall and has not been mowed in forever. And I called First Financial yesterday, and they informed me that they've sold the bank, and it's no longer their problem.
I'm coming to stick that sign up front.
Well, that's what John said today when he and I were talking about it.
Do we know who for sure bought it?
She wouldn't tell me. So it's not changed hands online or anything, so I don't know, but it looks really bad, so I did...
Technically, it's still theirs.
I tried to...
If the deed hadn't been transferred, it's still theirs.
Yeah, how, how long does it take to do that? I mean, for the courthouse to catch up?
Usually they're pretty fast. I mean, I, you know, honestly, I've had them where I've transferred deeds and they've shown up within two or three days, so I don't know. But she, that's what she came back and told me, so I did call about that one.
Maybe, maybe it's a motion sensor, uh, transfer.
No, that'd be on all the time.
Yeah, so I don't know. I just, I'm just, I know that Cliff was concerned about it, cause it looks really bad, and...
It does.
And I asked him today, cause I was out of town a couple of days last week, and I asked him if it was still like that yesterday, so I gave him a call, and that's what I found out, so.
Yeah, I noticed that this morning when I was out of town.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad it's sold.
Mm-hmm, maybe.
Yeah, might wanna reserve, might wanna reserve the right to, uh, take that back.
You think the bank would either wanna take their sign down or...
Yeah, don't, the sign's still there. Don't say sold or anything like that.
Hope it's not when...
Uh, I think it's another one of those stories, like...
Yeah, I don't know.
The guy in Connersville is telling me.
Yeah.
Well, they're not gonna do anything about that. I don't have to worry about that. Okay. I guess we're ready for clerk treasurer's report.
The clerk treasurer has to report that we have to request our ARP money by the end of August.
Did you see this?
And I was unaware, um, that it was that soon. I guess I wasn't paying attention and all that stuff I've sat in on. So I'm gonna start getting on the portal and getting everything in there. We, we don't have to have a plan to request it. When I talked to Scott Craig yesterday, he said, just request your money, get your money, then you have four years to spend it and come up with your plan. But he said, get your money, so, but apparently less than thirty percent of counties and cities and towns have actually already applied in Indiana, cause it's just, I, I think that Scott said they pretty much ask for everything but your firstborn child when you're applying. He said it's like a ridiculous amount, so I'm going to, next week, set my mind to getting that money, so. Um, beyond that, I've worked on the budget, like I said, and, um, that's about it. Everything else is going pretty good. So I don't have anything else.
Nothing else? Okay, we'll go around the room again for public comments. We're here. Nikki?
This is Cody Mason. He's the neighbor.
The neighbor?
Right here.
Oh. Uh, Chad, Birch, Kevin? All right, thank you. Uh, I'm ready for a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'm making a motion to approve the bill.
I'll second.
Oops, I did that backwards. It's been moved to second to, uh, pay the bills as presented. Is there a question? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Boy, she is quick on that, wasn't she?
She was.
It's been moved to second to, uh, adjourn the meeting till our next regular meeting unless specially called. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.